All right, I'll entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
Mayor Claffey has seconded it?
No.
I move that we've come out of closed session.
Everyone's looking at me.
Okay. Let's see, after the closed meeting, Mayor Claffey, I move that council reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed and that only public business matters as identified in a closed meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
A second.
Counselor Wood, thank you. Mr. Kessinger, could you please call a roll?
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claff.
Aye.
Motion carries.
You're now out of closed session. We're now on break till 7:30. Your meeting? Thank you. The regular meeting to order at 7:30 PM. And the first order of business is to pledge allegiance if you would please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight is my opportunity to give the invocation. And it's not quite March yet, in the dreary days of January. It's time to start thinking about St. Patrick's Day. And it's only six weeks away, so I'm pretty well known for my Irish blessings. And I always try to dig one out for the occasion. So with that in mind, may God grant you a sunbeam to warm you, a moonbeam to charm you, a sheltering angel so nothing can harm you, laughter to cheer you, faithful friends near you, and wherever you pray, heaven to hear you. Amen. So that brings us to the mayor's report. And we've had a busy time since two weeks ago when we last met here. And on Saturday, January 14th, council was invited to the Stanton Augusta Rescue Squad Dinner Dance Award Ceremony, installation officers, they did it all in one night. It was quite an event, and it was a big night attended by the Claffys, the Darbys, the Woods, the Arrowwoods. We all had couples, we all went and had a wonderful time. And we were awestruck by the enthusiasm shown by our rescue squad. They are a wonderful bunch of people. The executive director, who is Kim Craig, invited me to come and tour the North Coulter Street Facility, which I did yesterday. And I think we really need to appreciate what the rescue squad does at no cost to the city of Stan. We do not pay anything for the services they provide. They bill according to need, and they're very generous in the event of people that are financially unable to pay. Now, I'm well aware that Vice Mayor Darby, Counselor Robertson have worked for this. I always want to call it Salvation Army because it's S.A. And it's the Stanton Augusta Rescue Squad. And they've done their due diligence working for it, and I thank them. But this organization is amazing, and they have a $1.5 million budget. And they are employing 44 associates, so figure that out. Almost a million, one of it is in salaries, the rest of it's in keeping equipment. They have magnificent equipment. And I was in all sorts of vehicles. I should have had my grandson with me. But I really want you to support them when their campaign comes out in the spring, and they will ask for requests, and you know, please write them a check. They need the money. They are a wonderful organization that we can't say enough positive things for. So thank you to the Stanton Augusta Rescue Squad. Next thing, on Monday, January 16th, council was also invited to the 30th Annual Memorial Service at Central United Methodist Church for Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial. It was a great event, and it is cosponsored by the NAACP and Mary Baldwin. And it was extraordinarily well attended. It was packed. And it was a very cool event. And that night, Counselors Darby, Edwards, Woods, and Arrowwoods joined me on the dais when we presented a proclamation in honor of Martin Luther King. And I thought it went very well. It was a great event, so I want to thank everybody for coming that night, giving me moral support up there, you know. So thanks. So let me turn this over now to additional members by members of council. You might have anything they want to add?
I just wanted to say that I really enjoyed the banquet for the Stanton Rescue Squad. I really enjoyed that. And also, I really enjoyed and liked giving you the support that you needed for the proclamation at the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration. And that was fantastic to see that all five of us, I'm sorry, Mr. Robertson wasn't in there, but all five of us standing there, supporting our mayor and one another. And that spoke volumes. That really spoke volumes to, not just for us, but the whole community as a whole.
It was great.
On, I think, last Thursday, I had the privilege of attending the Virginia Municipal League Lobby Day in Richmond with our city manager. We attended Virginia First Cities Meeting. That was interesting. I had not attended one of those before, so I learned something there. Then was able to spend some time in the Pocahontas Building, talking to our legislators and talking to them about the different bills that they're putting forward. And actually, there was a small contingent of Stanton folks that I spotted and was able to say hello to. So that was nice, but it was a good day, so.
I have an item. This last week, I was able to meet up with David Kane, the local historian and author. And he and a small group of volunteers have been gradually making their way out to Fairview Cemetery and helping to restore a lot of the historic gravestones there as well. And it's just a small group, and I don't have everybody's names with me, but they're dedicated to trying to get that area in better shape. And they could really use some help if anybody would be interested in doing that. Because they're, you know, out there with cement and writing a lot of the historical gravestones there and doing all of that. So if anybody would like to get involved with that, just please get in touch. And I can put you in touch with Mr. Kane, that group.
Thank you, Brad. Hold on. Brad had to leave us and go home to take care of some sick children. But can everyone on counseling in the audience hear him?
Yes.
Very good. I was remiss in not... You have to tell us your location, Brad.
It can't just be undisclosed. I'm at my house on Fillmore Street with two kids with COVID, so here I am.
You take care of those kids. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to quickly let you all know that I had a fantastic tour with Director Scobis here, Sarah Scobis, Director of the Library. She took me around and showed me all of the fantastic things that they're doing. And what I was most impressed with was the Talking Book Center. If you haven't been in there before, just please go in and talk to the staff. I was very impressed with how they serve the community with books on tape. They'll send them to you. They provide you with an envelope to send them back. It's just a terrific service that's offered. And I wanted to also let you know about this Braille e-reader that was just fabulous, a Braille e-reader. So if you are seeing impaired, I can't even describe it, but the Braille, it disappears. You push a button, then you get the new Braille. You push a button, so it's all electronic. So that's a fantastic service. And also, they have these bill readers. Yeah, so if you are someone who is sight impaired, all of our dollar bills look exactly the same, 20, 100, you know, 50, they all look the same. So you can get these for free of charge, right? Free of charge, a little device that will tell you, auditorily tell you that you have a $1 bill or a $5 bill. You just have to call up the library, and they will send this to you. And I understand that we are the only library in the state that offers this service same day. So they're doing fantastic things over there in the library.
Thank you, sir. Everything you do at the library.
No, just the last two weeks I've been working. It's been busy at the pharmacy, is all I can say.
It's January. We understand. All right, approval of minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as printed for the January 12th meeting. I'm sorry.
All right, a motion has been made.
I'll second.
We have a second here. Mr. Kessinger, call a roll, please.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, that brings us to our regular meeting, and we're going to have a public hearing and introduction of ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2023 budget ordinance for the city of Stan by adding Budget Amendment Number Four. Ms. Beauregard.
Jesse Moyers, our CFO, is here this evening. And yes, this is just the public hearing and introduction this evening of this quote "humongous budget amendment," as Miss Moyers likes to say. So she has a brief PowerPoint. Again, because it's so large, it's a lot. So I'll let her walk through that, and then we'll go from there.
Very fast.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I want to apologize ahead of time. This is a big one, and it's going to take a little bit of time to get through. Like she said, this budget amendment does require a public hearing, which was properly advertised on January 19th, and is scheduled to be held right after my introduction. The budget amendment totals $28.8 million. The city portion is a little over $18 million, and the school portion is about $10.6 million. This budget amendment will be brought back to council at the February 9th meeting for your consideration. The general fund portion of this amendment totals $5.8 million, of which $5.3 is an appropriation from prior year fund balance. Slide three summarizes the $1,10618. Can you go back one slide? For prior year carryforward funds, and this is grants, donations, and insurance recoveries received in or before FY22, but they had not been spent by June 30th, 2022. That includes $15,478 for state asset forfeiture funds, $583 for the leftover Susan Blackley grant, $1,056 for the Nature Park Reserve, $2,0876 for Booker T. Washington Kitchen, $21,355 for four-for-life funds carryforward balance, $113,111 for the fire programs carryforward balance, $93,455 for state and federal asset funds, $16,215 to appropriate insurance recoveries for two damaged cruisers, and $737,489, that's carryover funds for highway maintenance. Slide four is the remaining appropriation from fund balance, and it should look familiar to you. This was presented at the December 8th meeting. This is $2.4 million for the capital improvements fund. This is according to our 2226 CIP plan. As you could know, the FY23 budget had to be cut. This is restoring that, plus funding projects from '23 and '24 that were scheduled to be funded with carryover funds. There's $1 million for the water fund. That's to help fund the overage from the Gardner Springs Pump Station project. As you know, that came in over budget. This is a general fund transfer to help ease some of that overage from the water fund. $400,000, a transfer to the debt service fund. That is funding that was cut to balance the FY23 budget, and we're restoring the funding there to $4.8 million, which is where we were the last few fiscal years. And then we have a reserve of $500,000. And that is for the July storm that really hit our parks hard. We have filed a claim, I believe, with FEMA. We're still waiting word. If that comes back, then that will free up these funds. But right now, we want to set them aside to cover for that damage that we had to clean up. Slide five summarizes the $296,332 recovered cost for the general fund, and it includes $108,325 for the amount we have received so far for the opioid settlement. Approximately $152,000 we have received for insurance recoveries for the storm damage. $99,000 of that was to help with the damaged trees. And the other $52,960 is for other damaged items, the roof of the Golf Pro shop, and for lost revenues, things like that. $1,100 for a tree restitution, and then the rest, about $35,000, is for other insurance recoveries. As you can see, we've had about five different deer strikes so far this year in FY23. Slide six summarizes the $176,695 of grants and donations for the general fund so far in FY23. And it includes the $60,000 for Virginia Thorson Grant for the CARES Act, $2,0823 for the Circuit Court from the Supreme Court of Virginia, $10,000 for the Susan Blackley Grant, $15,312 for the fire programs grant funds, and $1,074 for the FM Global Fire Prevention, $695, that is additional funds of $695 above what was budgeted for the Funds for Life, $6,486 for the SRO grant, $13,200 for the DMV Highway Safety Grant, $235 donation for Project Lifesaver, and $4,0970 for the Versa Grant. On slide seven, the grant fund portion of this budget amendment is $45,972. I have them listed as FIRE, but I actually, I think they belong to EDI. This is to appropriate the Homeland Security Unmanned Aerial System Grant for $43,000, and the local law enforcement block grant for $2,0972. The next slide is for Blue Ridge Court Services, and it totals $31,219. It's their $800 share of the Versa Grant, $15,419 for additional FY23 budget funding for the Blue Ridge Court Services, and $15,000 for their Augusta Health Grant Fund. Slide nine summarizes the capital improvement fund totaling the $2.4 million. These funds were appropriated under the general fund prior year carryover. We now need to appropriate them in the CIP fund. The first three amounts are the amounts being appropriated according to the 2226 CIP plan. The next lines are not an appropriation of additional revenue. They are requests to move balances between one CIP project to another. According to our policy, this request requires to be approved by council members. The transfer of $59,441 is to fund a negative balance in the Radio Narroban project. It is coming from the money that we have set aside for the emergency communications. The next line is $379,000. That is funds that we need to do the ADA crosswalks, I believe, on West Beverly in connection with that B. Opating project. It is possible that maybe we could use some of our highway maintenance carryover funds, since that is an eligible road. If that is the case, then I'll come back to you, and we can reappropriate these funds somewhere else. The $50,000 is to close out an old project balance. And the last item is $86,000 for the sheriff transport van, the prisoner transport van. The current unit is 17 years old and is experiencing both mechanical and security-related issues. And so we're proposing to fund that out of the undesignated account, which has a balance of about $286,000. So this will leave $200,000 in that undesignated line.
Is $86,000 a normal price for a van?
It is the van plus the insert and the installation of the insert. So it's more than just a van. And this is a three-compartment insert. It will allow to transport both male and female prisoners at the same time, but keeping them separated. And the three-compartment unit has a third unit section so that you can have just one prisoner there by themselves if they're being very unruly.
Don't they typically transport those in the cars that have already those?
Right now, we have a van that wasn't originally for prisoner transport, but it's been retrofitted. I believe it's just a van with bench seats with wire on the windows that they use for transporting.
I've just seen them transport most of the prisoners I've seen in their cars. Okay.
Slide 10 shows the appropriation of the $400,000 for the debt sinking fund. This was appropriated from the general fund carryover. And like I said, it restores the debt service sinking fund contribution to $4.8 million, in line with previous years. Slide 11 is an appropriation for the water fund totaling $9.5 million. $1 million is the carryover of the general fund transfer. And eight and a half is where we're appropriating the Gardner Springs Bond Funds. Slide 12 shows some small negative appropriation for the environmental fund. And this is an adjustment for the Commonwealth of Virginia Grant Funds. And then slide 13 starts the school portion of Budget Amendment 14. The education fund totals a little over $5.9 million, of which $5.7 is an appropriation of state and federal grants. And the remaining $175,270 is to appropriate donations and insurance recoveries received thus far in '23. Slide 13 also shows $32,600 appropriation for the Shenandoah Valley Juvenile Center for their Title I Part D grant. And then the last slide that appropriates the school CIP fund of $4.6 million and the school cafeteria fund of $43,000. The CIP appropriation includes $2.7 for S3 construction funding, $1.6 for the state construction grant funds. They're using both of those to go toward the project that you heard about earlier at Shelburne. $8,431 for the HVAC ARPA grant, and $269,421, which was an insurance recovery for the wear trailer replacement. The cafeteria appropriation is for donations and grant balances received during or before FY22 that were not spent as of June 30th, 2022, so they're carrying forward. And that concludes my introduction and overview of Budget Amendment Number Four. I can take questions at this time if you have any. The city manager approves this introduction of this amendment as presented and recommends council conduct the public hearing.
Any questions before we go to the public hearing? All right, in a moment, I'll open up a public hearing. It is a time the council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about the specific topic. We ask that you please give your name, your address, keep your remarks to five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute mark, I will let you know that your time has expired. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand now if you wish to speak on this particular public hearing. If you raise your hand during this public hearing, you'll also be able to raise your hand during the regular matters from the public at the end of the meeting, where we ask you to keep your comments to five minutes as well. Once everyone has had an opportunity to speak, I will then close the public hearing. I will now open the public hearing. If you wish to speak, please approach the podium. Does anybody wish to speak at the public hearing having to do with Budget Amendment Number Four? Mr. Kessinger, is anybody on Zoom line wants to speak?
Yes, sir.
I will now close the public hearing. Thank you. That was easy. Any other comments from council considering this? We have a lot of information to digest. We will have questions for you next time. Thank you, Ms. Moyers. We do not introduce at this point, do we?
Did somebody read the motions?
I don't think we did. Mayor Claffey, I move to introduce an ordinance, which we've already heard, amending the fiscal year 2023 budget by adding Budget Amendment Number Four totaling $28,833,731, and that council conduct the public hearing of the ordinance, which we...
We have now done it. All right. There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Edward. Mr. Kessinger, could you please call a roll?
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Brings us to Item B, introduction of an ordinance to appropriate an additional 25% of the fiscal year 2023 adopted budget. Ms. Beauregard.
Ms. Moyers is back at the podium to walk through this as well.
Hello. So this evening, I'm introducing a request to appropriate the final 25% of our FY23 adopted budget. As you're aware, in response to the uncertainty of the economy and the potential impact on the city's 2023 revenues, the city budget was appropriate at a level of 75% to allow staff the time to assess the impact of the lingering effects of the global pandemic on our local revenues as the fiscal year unfolded. Revenues continue to perform well compared to prior year and are trending to exceed our FY23 budget requirements. Meals tax through November is up about $150,000 compared to the same time last year, and we are projecting to finish above budget as long as trends continue the rest of the fiscal year. Sales tax through October is up $220,000 compared to the same time last year and is trending above budget as long as trends continue the rest of the fiscal year. Lodging tax through November is up about $66,000 compared to the same time last year, and we are projected to meet or exceed the FY23 budget amounts. In addition, real estate, personal property tax, and business licenses are all set to meet or exceed budget projections. Given these overall positive variances, we feel comfortable appropriating the final 25% of the FY23 budget at this time, bringing the total FY23 adopted budget appropriation to 100%. This appropriation request equals $35,546,376. And it does not require a public hearing, as one was held during the budgeting process for the full budget amount. The city portion of the budget amendment is $24,666,812, and the school portion of the budget appropriation is $10,879,564. The details have been summarized in your packet and include the following. The general fund share is approximately $16.3 million. Debt service, $1.3 million. Blue Ridge Court Services, $323,000. The water fund and the sewer fund are approximately $2.5 million each. $138,000 for the parking fund, $478,000 for the stormwater fund, and a little over $1 million for the environmental fund. On the school side, it's about $9.5 million for the education fund, $469,000 for the cafeteria fund, $85,000 for the textbook fund, $25,000 for the school CIP fund, and lastly, $823,000 for the state operated programs in the schools. This ordinance will be brought back to council for consideration at the February 9th regular meeting. The city manager recommends its introduction as presented.
Question, do we intend to do this same 75%, 25% for the fiscal '24 budget?
I do not intend to do it. I don't know if Leslie feels any different.
We hadn't really talked about it yet, to be honest.
For our new council members, this started during the COVID days, and we were unsure of what revenues were going to be. So the final 25% of the year pertains to April, May, and June. And we really haven't approached... And we really haven't appropriated the money for those three months yet until we check revenues. And like she just announced, revenues are running ahead of schedule. So therefore, we're in good shape that we can handle the last three months. Where if if we were in bad shape, we might have to make cuts now before we approve the final three months. But it looks like we're good to go. And I don't know if it's a safety net that you want to continue to have or if it's an additional burden on you to split it up. So I mean, I'll leave it up to y'all.
Well, we'll have a better idea as we get further along in the budget process, I think.
There's other ways to monitor the budget. I'd never heard of this until I came here, and in my 14 years as budget director in Charlottesville, we didn't do this ever. And I understand why we did it at the time because we didn't know what COVID was the impact COVID was going to have. And it was wise to do it then, I think. But there's other ways to monitor the budget as well as you go through the year. So if we see or start to see trends this time next year that don't look very good, we will definitely let you know. And so there's other ways.
And it does cause a little bit more burden on staff because we constantly have to explain that the bunny's still there. It just will be appropriated at a later date. We had a lot of questions from our outside agencies going, oh, I requested this amount, but I only got this. And I'm like, it's okay, I'll send you the other 25% once it's been appropriated and it's available.
Okay.
Jesse, would you see this as more of an extraordinary measure? Or or, you know, more of just an opportunity for a course correction each each year? Would you would you say that's just something we only did with COVID in mind or would be useful going forward, in your opinion?
I think it was only done with COVID in mind as an extraordinary measure too. Because we were unsure of what like meals and sales tax would do during that time. But so far, they're trending to be ahead what we projected.
Any other questions? All right, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Claffey. I move to introduce an ordinance amended in the fiscal year 2023 budget by adding additional 25% of the FY2023 adopted budget in amount equal 35,546,376.
Thank you. Is a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
Mayor Claffey, I'll second that.
Mr. Kessler.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye. Next item on the agenda is a consideration of a final plat for Windbrook, section five. Ms. Bogart.
Rodney Rhodes, our senior planner is here this evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Claffey and city council members. It's a pleasure to be here. Windbrook is a single family residential development located on New Hope Road near its overpass on Interstate 81. Back in 2003, city council approved a rezoning of the property and a preliminary plat for the development of 76 single family lots. To date, 63 of those lots have received final plat approval. The proposed section five before you this evening contains four new lots. The final plat is in general conformance with the approved preliminary plat from 2003 and all requirements of the zoning and subdivision ordinances. And Stanton City Code requires that Stanton City Council approve all final plats. At the October 20, 2022 meeting of the Planning Commission, on a three to zero vote, the commission voted to recommend approval of the final plat with one condition, and that was that the items included on the city engineer's punch list be addressed before the final plat be placed on city council's agenda. Over the past three months, the developer has completed all but one of those items on the punch list, and that remaining item is raising the fire hydrant six inches. The necessary riser has been ordered. It's on back order. But once it is, they receive it, it will be installed and the height of the fire hydrant will be corrected. Is my understanding, it is still functional at this time at its current heights. The city engineer has conducted an inspection and has verified that all other infrastructure is ready for acceptance by the city. Therefore, staff recommends that city council approve the final plat for section five. This is not a public hearing, but I'd be glad to take any questions you have at this time. I would also note that the land surveyor Daniel Hanson is here if you have any technical questions.
Counselors, do you have any questions?
This isn't a technical question, Mr. Rhodes, but does does the developer have a timeline for constructing these homes? These additional homes?
Uh, no, there is no requirement on that.
Okay. The re- go ahead.
I'm sorry.
The reason I ask that is because I'm wondering if if studies are done on how an additional, you know, 67-ish new single family homes will impact our school system, for example, our fire departments having to get to that neighborhood in a certain amount of time, how it might. Go ahead.
Well, I would note that 63 lots have been received final plat approval over the past 20 years. I would guess that the majority of those lots have been developed with single family homes. I've driven through that neighborhood a couple of weeks ago. I didn't count, but we're talking about four new lots and probably four additional houses.
Thank you. I apologize.
Mr. Rhodes, the size of the lots, are they same as the ones that's already, you know, have single family dwellings on them and such?
Roughly, yes. There was, that was a proffered rezoning, and the minimum lot size is 12,000 square feet. And I believe all of these average about or are over that 12,000 square feet, these four new lots.
Any other questions?
I just want to clear a line. When you say clarify, when you say punch punch list, those are things that need to be done before it can go forward.
Those were the things that the city engineer and city staff noted when this went to planning commission way back in October. So those are items that need to be addressed before it reached this point. So like I said, all of them have been addressed to the satisfaction of the city engineer except that fire hydrant.
Thank you.
That's because it's on back order.
Yes, sir, that part is.
Well, I would consider a motion.
Okay, that's another question. You said 70, it's it's set for 76?
Uh, the total development at buildout will be 76 single family lots. Based on my math, if you approve these four lots this evening, that there would be nine more lots to be developed.
Mayor Claffey. I move that city council approve the final plat as recommended by the planning commission.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Edward, second. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Kessler.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Rodney. All right, next that brings us to a discussion of recommended allocation of remaining American Rescue Plan Act funds. Ms. Bogart.
So this is a continuation of our discussion from two weeks ago. Ms. Moyers is going to walk through the recommendations again. I think she also has some other items to share that have since come up, and we've also heard your questions. But in any questions you have, this is the time to bring them up. Tonight, we would like your guidance guidance on where to go from here, either approve the list or a portion of the list and so that we can start actually getting these projects going. And but again, we're always happy to answer questions, and we can walk through this as quickly or slowly as you like tonight. All right.
Okay. So as a reminder, Stanton's ARPA allocation is 12,955,826. The next slide, give one more. Shows you the breakdown of the 3,232,500 has already been appropriated. I did want to mention one thing here. Staff believes that the West End Small Area Plan may require additional funding. We may need to allocate an additional $50,000 to that line. If council is in agreement, then I'll will make that part of the ARPA budget amendment that will will hopefully bring back to you at the next council meeting.
Can we know why it's going to require another 50,000?
I mean. Rodney, do you want to speak to that?
I'm sure council is aware the city has previously put out a request for proposals for a small area plan for Union Town. And based on the quotes we received on that, I was a little concerned that maybe 100,000 wouldn't be enough to do a plan on a much larger area. So that was my concern. Maybe we'll still get it for under 100,000, but I'd like to have some additional funds in case it costs more than that.
Okay, this question is for Mrs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the additional 50,000, where are you pulling that from to?
Uh, it depends on how the discussion goes tonight and which projects are we're moving forward with. But at this point, it would come from the leftover balance that's being allocated toward separating out the JDR court facilities from Augusta County. Um, I'll run through the projects that we're presenting. We can discuss them as I go through them, or we can wait until the end and have discussion then.
Which do you prefer, Jesse?
I can do it either way. Whatever you prefer.
Okay.
So the first one that we're recommending is to purchase new two new fire engines at an estimated cost of $1 million each. The fire department also has a need to replace their heavy duty rescue unit, which is currently 27 years old and was due for replacement in 21. However, after conversation with Chief Garber, the greater need right now is for the two fire engines. The current lead time to get a fire engine is almost two years. So we would like to use ARPA funds to go ahead and purchase the two units now. Where we would be replacing engine number three, which is a 23 year old unit that was due for for replacement in 2018. And we will be replacing engine number two. Engine number two is a 2008 model, which is due for replacement this year. But due to the lead time, it would actually be two years beyond its replacement date by the time we received it.
Could we stop for just a second? There's a huge discrepancy, it looks like, in, not huge, I don't know, because I'm not. But between engine two and engine three, we see the 84,000 miles and the 113,000 miles, and then, you know, 10,000 motor hours and 57,000 motor hours. And I realize the two hour lead time, the two hour, the two year lead time is is must be taken into into account. I'm wondering if we were to want to use the million from another fund because we would have, do you have to pay for these upfront? Would we have two years to put money aside for a million dollar?
If we were using ARPA funds, we would probably pay for them upfront because you get a better price paying for it upfront. Right now, the fire engine reserve line is a negative balance. It would probably take us up to FY26 to build that up enough at our current CIP rates to be able to purchase one unit.
I would I would echo Michelle's concern on that because I I engine number two, the 2008 unit has about a fifth of the motor hours and and a fifth of the motor miles on it as well. So, you know, if we're saying engine number three is still in fact usable, then it it looks like it. Engine number two, the 2008 unit has years of life left in it, whether whether it's scheduled to be replaced or not. So I don't know, it just seems a little preemptive to to jump at it and and replace that one right away. Especially as we we tend to put aside, if I'm right, isn't it $350,000 a year? Well, I know we have a fund going every year that we set aside for vehicle replacement on that. And I I would think that we we would, by the time we would really truly need to replace the 2008 unit, we would get to that number for the amount that it will cost to replace it. But, you know, that's just, that's just like. Yeah, I would love to. I would love to ask.
He can walk you through this better than I can.
Yeah, thank you.
So I can tell you right now, engine two's in the shop. It is out of service. It has been for two weeks, and it probably will be for another three or four weeks. It is completely wore out. They, when engine three was built, they really built fire trucks very, very durable, just like your automobiles. They lasted longer. Now they don't last as long. It's the same thing. We're just not getting the use out of them. I can just tell you just from last year's call volume to this, or excuse me, from 2021 call volume to 2022, we had 11% increase in call volume. These trucks get beat up every day. And it's just, it's just the use of them. We're not the only ones having this problem. And I did find out just today that 24th, 24 month lead time is now 36 months. So and these pumpers that are now a million dollars, 12 months ago, they were only $700,000.
Chief Garber, can, just for the lead time, can you speak a little bit more about? I mean, that's the time that they are actually constructing the engine.
Yes, so building fire apparatus is not like buying your personal automobile. There is not a fire apparatus lot. You go pick out which one you want. They are built, custom built for your specification, however you build them. And that they're built from the ground up. And that the lead time is, a lot of other departments are doing exactly what we're here requesting tonight, as well as lead time on parts, supply chain issues, things like that. So there's a lot of things that are leading into that's 36 monthly time now, which that used to be eight to nine months to have one built.
Is there any, is there any sale resale value in in these units?
Not much. The resale value of fire apparatus has really gone down because everybody's buying new stuff. They have ARPA money. So engine three, because of its age, it's not worth anything. To be honest with you, I don't know why it's still running. You look at the motor miles on it. It should have probably had an in frame rebuilt on that motor done several years ago. It's still running. I I can't tell you why, other than it was built very good. The 2008, it's just, it's just wore out. And our call volume, when when engine three was bought, our call volume was probably 1,200 calls a year. And now we're 4,300 calls a year. So that's, that's a big, that's a big change. That's, that's the big difference.
Chief, I mean, and I know we talked, you said the resale value has gone down, but did we ever? Did we ever sell that? The old ladder truck that was replaced, we did sell that. All right, so we may be able to get, well, you don't know. I mean, you said not very much at all, but I mean, do we plan on trying to get some money back from it?
You probably will not get, and I'm just speculating. You'll probably get less than $30,000 a piece for each one of them.
But I mean, we can still do that, can't we?
We can.
I mean, I'm just saying.
I mean, that's what we do with them.
Yeah, I mean.
The 1996 model that we just surplus, you all voted to let us donate that to Kentucky for a department that that truck was actually 20 years older than the newest truck they had, and that was a 1996 that we gave them. So and that's something else that can be done. And I will point out that we have had times we've had more than one piece of apparatus out of service, and we don't have anything else to operate with. And graciously enough, volunteer departments in this area have let us borrow their equipment. However, that's pretty embarrassing for our people to have to be responding to calls on another department's piece of apparatus.
And I get that. I'm just saying it's it's taxpayers' money. We just, we can either, if we can, if if we donate it for a good cause, fantastic. But or if we can get some money back to fund something else.
I think I asked answered your question for the resale value, but.
You did. You did.
Any other questions?
Tell me about this heavy rescue unit, which is a 96 mile out to toward the rescue squad, and they have a rescue unit as well. They're they had some years on it. What's the difference between your rescue unit and the rescue squads?
Theirs is older than ours is. They do not respond to theirs on calls any longer. We respond to ours on calls that the specialized equipment it carries is needed, mainly like building collapses, things like that. So you don't, you never hear of a building collapse and stand, right? But how often do we have somebody drives a vehicle into a building, which is probably weekly? And that carries equipment to stabilize that building so we can safely operate in it. And they can still do business or whatever. So. So that vehicle was bought used from the town of Chillicothe, probably in, I was not the fire chief then, but it was probably two thousand and five, maybe I'm I'm guessing at that. And we we bought that with some grant money at that time. So that was not bought new for the city of Stanton. It was a used vehicle and we bought it.
And is it functional?
It is, yes.
And it doesn't go out on routine runs?
It probably goes out half a dozen times a week, probably. It, the problem with a nineteen ninety six is you can't find parts for nineteen ninety six models anymore. And that's the same thing with the other fire apparatus. You, parts just become obsolete, obsolete.
Any other questions?
Chief, this is Brad Erwood. Going back to the, what you were saying about how you feel the fire trucks, like the older units maybe last longer and are better built. Have you gotten any feedback from other departments or anything like that about the the ones we're talking about purchasing now? If if it's a true apples to apples on this two thousand and two thousand eight unit, I mean, the two thousand eight has about a fifth of the motor hours and and motor miles on it. Like, do you think that's what we could expect from something we're buying now?
I would say that would be my expectation. And it's just because of the run, run volume. We actually don't replace a piece of apparatus. You don't have the apparatus replacement schedule in front of you, but we usually replace something at fifteen years. At fifteen years, the value of maintaining it is past what it's worth. So that's when we replace it. Parts become obsolete, we can't find parts, you can't get parts. So there are departments that replace the same apparatus because of their run volume is much higher on a three to five year basis, but we're doing it on a fifteen year basis.
Okay, and and one other thing I was just thinking about was, you you talked about your your call volume going up tremendously over the last number of years on that, on that, or is that entirely fires or or is that? Remember in the, in the tour, you were mentioning that you guys are wearing a lot of different hats, not just the fire hat in a lot of situations. You know, is that, because I know we've been pretty stagnant in population on that, but the the number of calls has gone up greatly. Could you, I'm just curious about how that's, that's worked out.
Yeah, so the majority of our responses are emergency medical calls. And that's only about sixty five to seventy percent of our call volume. The national average is about seventy five to eighty percent. So we're still under the national average for our EMS run volume. So we still do a good amount of fire duty, fire responses. It may not be an actual fire itself, but it's a, it's a smoke detector sounding, it's an automatic fire alarm system doing what they're designed to do is to pre alert you to a small fire. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Questions, comments?
So.
Do you want one or two?
I'll take three.
Yeah. So I reckon, this is for Leslie. And I think I know where Brad was kind of going with this, but are, based on that assumption where you're looking at it with seven hundred thousand, now it's a million dollar replacement and we're replacing it several years sooner. Are we making and are we setting up our a plan where we're starting to build a greater amount in this, this reserve fund to, you know, to do it sooner and do it quicker? I mean, you know, do a greater fee or a greater amount of money?
We are, and this will allow us to, when we get to the next replacement, to be in the positive and have money sitting there ready to to work.
If we do the two.
Yes.
Let me, let me go back and ask one more question. Are we, are we in a negative reserve?
Until the budget amendment is, so the budget amendment you heard this evening will eliminate that negative balance.
And just cut it to zero. So therefore we have.
Positive, right?
Positive, I can't remember the exact amount, but I feel like it's between two and three hundred thousand. Somewhere around there.
Close to what it should be.
And we of course can't take, we can't take ARPA money and put it in reserve because it must be used, must be used on physical.
Correct, you have to spend it.
By twenty twenty six.
The price increase on on these type of apparatus is just, it's just happening. Harrisonburg bought this same piece of apparatus in November and it was eight hundred and thirty some thousand. Now it's, it's at a million. We hope.
Play that Scott.
So actually, if we're thinking about one, and she said it'll be like twenty twenty six before that fund will be built it up. And then it'll take at least twenty four to thirty six months to get it. We're looking at five years, five to six years before that second one will even be even considered here and ready. So we are adding six more years on the two thousand eight.
Well, that that could be the case, though this, this could be the result of a sort of feeding frenzy at the manufacturer due to ARPA funds.
That's true.
I'll just point out that that two thousand model should have been replaced in twenty eighteen and which would have already been here and in service. And then the engine two, the two thousand and eight model would be due for replacement this year, which is at a ten year mark. So we do replacements every five years. And then at that ten year mark, which is two thousand eight models at, it would be going into what we call reserve, which is basically a backup. So we only have three fire pumpers, two in service and then one that's a backup for mechanical breakdowns or things like that.
How old's the backup?
It's the two thousand model.
That's the one that's in backup right now. Brad, what do you think?
It's just kind of disturbing to hear that they don't make them like they used to. I don't know, I I need to understand a little bit more about that unit. Now, now what's the, Chief, what's? What year is engine number one then?
It is a two thousand and thirteen.
Okay, so we got a few years on that one.
It's, it would be due for replacement in twenty twenty eight. So technically in twenty twenty three this year, that unit would be going into reserve status because it would have had two new ones purchased prior to, which wasn't done.
So Scott, if we were to approve the two units, you would, that would get us basically to an entire new, in a couple of years, an entire new force and would put us in the positive, in a much better position for the years to come. Using ARPA funds and not having to, okay.
We have to understand that we pray no more COVID and no more. ARPA money is a one time only deal.
Well, this has been very helpful. Your explanation is very helpful, thank you, Chief Garber.
He never, he never asks for much, yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief, thank you all.
All right, Jesse, keep going, that was a good one.
So discussion after each one, is that what I'm hearing? Okay, the next one is a smaller request, but Public Works, they have four dump trucks that were bought years ago that kind of all need replacing now, but our recommendation is to only replace two because we don't want us to stay in a pattern where they're all coming due at one time. So our suggestion is to spend three hundred thousand of ARPA funds to replace two of them now. The others will be funded with the Public Works Equipment Reserve. Once it's built up enough that they can purchase that equipment. Jeff is here, if you have any questions related to dump trucks?
Smile, Jeff.
Jeff, how many dump trucks do we have? I'm sorry, I didn't.
That's all right, that's the one thing I did here. I'm trying to stagger mine to two at a time instead of all at once.
We can put seven on the road on a, if, if, you know, if our luck's, luck's running well. But the, yeah, four were purchased all at once in a previous largess from the council. And those chickens are all coming home to roost simultaneously. So we just want to build our stagger back in. Once we do that, we think our sinking fund should be able to take it from there.
And how old are these two?
These two are thirteen years old.
Running out of useful life.
And the, the replacement fund, the sinking fund, can you speak to how that works for Public Works? It's the same.
Same thing, we, money is set aside regularly each year. So when trucks reach the end of their life, we can access those funds to replace them.
Same amount.
Same amount, I'm not. Some of the same dynamics that were happening in the fire apparatus are happening with dump trucks, but obviously a dump truck is not quite as exotic. So those, they're not quite as severe. We're just looking to sort of get our fleet management back in line with our sinking fund. Sort of a one time correction, which makes it appropriate for one time ARPA funds.
Everybody, questions on Alan?
Jeff is, Mr. Johnson is thirteen years about an average lifespan of a dump truck or you can't say, depends on.
It's, it's, it's not the miles, it's the hours to some, to some extent. I know at least with with one of these trucks, that there's a lot of corrosion issues that came with a a lot of, with spreading a lot of salt. And a spreader that wasn't exactly aligned necessarily, but no, it's, it's, it's not really the miles with a dump truck. It's, it's how it's used.
Good deal. Don't run away, Jeff.
All right, so I'm going to move on to parks and rec. The first request for parks and rec is four hundred and eighty thousand dollars to repave the park road and two parking lots at Montgomery Hall Park. I'm told it was not, has not been paved since nineteen seventy two. There are significant issues with cracking and damaged pavement, and we just believe it is time to pave that road at that park. Any questions or should I go one?
No, you need to bring Mr. Tuttle up here. Welcome and thanks, we know that Montgomery Hall needs, needs it badly and and where, where do we do Irish road bowling?
At Montgomery Hall.
We need it done by one seventeen.
Everything I have on the list, we need done.
Did you tell him to say that, Liz?
Thank you.
I said it the last time and I'll say it again, but you know, if this thing hasn't been paved since nineteen seventy two, I'd like the same company to do it. If it's gonna last fifty years.
I don't know if that'll work.
Yeah, but they've all retired.
They sure have.
That road's bad.
And the parking lot, that includes the parking lot down like in front of the first softball field there.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it's in the parking lot right beside the playground as you're coming up the hill on your right, that little lot. We paved some of those lots a couple of years ago with Public Works Assistant, but that would basically do the whole part. Now, on this, there's, there's no, if I recall, there, there's no changes, this is just paving existing like as it is now.
Correct.
Other questions? That's, that's a slam dunk, we gotta do that one.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle, thank you.
Montgomery Hall Park Bathroom is next.
So we would like to use three hundred thousand to update the bathrooms at Montgomery Hall Park. Gypsy Hill Park Bathroom Restoration is currently underway. And this would allow us much needed updates to the Montgomery Hall Park bathrooms. You have any questions for Mr. Tuttle?
I thought we were taking the one down in Gypsy Hill Park on the the West End.
That's on the other, that's for the Gypsy Hill project, the one that's at the West End. We're removing that one and and planning to build another one near that picnic shelter.
Yes, how's that going?
Lyle, you might want to address it, we're, we're working with a firm now on the plans that were, that's completed, I think, or as far as.
That's the one on the golf course side at the far Churchill Avenue.
Right, it's right down below eighteen, right.
Right, we're just very end of design stage and hoping to build a bid that soon. And that's renovating two, two existing restrooms and also getting them up to ADA compliance at the site of those two. And then completely replacing the one on the kind of the north end there of the park.
At the north end?
West end, so we would duplicate that at Montgomery Hall. Currently in Montgomery Hall, the rest, the outdoor restaurants are all winterized, so there are, we bring in portage ons. My hope is that we could add heat to these, that they're usable year round. It would be a huge plus for Montgomery Hall Park.
And is this dollar total in line with what Gypsy Hill is costing us?
I'll have a, a better idea once we get the bids in, but it's, Gypsy Hill is probably going to be because, because we're re, completely replacing the one, the one structure, Gypsy Hill is probably going to end up being more, more than.
There's no plumbing going to where it's going to be.
What's that?
There's no, there's no water lines going to where it's going to be.
Correct, they'll have to extend the water service in this, who are service line up.
That's needed, everybody agree?
That is.
That's a yes.
Subtract.
So next is a request for four hundred thousand of ARPA funding to refresh the bath house facilities at both the Gypsy Hill Park Pool and the Montgomery Hall Park Pool to include updated fixtures, critical building repairs, updated lighting, flooring and new paint. Questions on that one?
Issues? Brad?
Is there a reason why it didn't include toilets, new bathrooms?
I included that as fixtures.
Oh, I'm, oh, that's fixtures, okay, I was gonna say that, that could use an upgrade, thank you.
That's a yes.
Okay, the next item or the last suggestion for parks and rec is to use two hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funding for the design phase of renovating Moxie Stadium. The construction phase would likely not meet the ARPA timelines and therefore is currently proposed in the CIP funding with the source being carryover funding. The renovation would require a demolition of the existing buildings and seating along with some minor field work. The facility is used by Stanton High School, Stanton Braves and Mary Baldwin University. Therefore, this renovation will require significant planning and coordinating with those parties. There has been some discussion by council members about whether we push the design to the CIP plan, so I'll take questions at this time.
I reckon my question was, I mean, we could have helped ARPA do some, but Mary Baldwin and who else, what, I mean. Maybe they need to help a little bit in.
Ms. Bogart, you care to address that?
You're talking about construction?
We're talking about assistance from MBU and the race.
Yeah, Mary.
They have not been approached.
All groups are aware of the potential project down the road.
Our director shaking his head.
My standpoint, I would like to have control over it. If you can help with construction, we need to control design. Correct.
No, no, that's what I said, the original design, but I said, when it comes down to nuts and bolts and lumber and they use the facility, they can help it a little bit. Yeah.
Definitely with construction. You know, also, one of our users, one of our users isn't listed and it's, I don't know if it's the right term, it's American Legion or it's the, it's the teenage, eight, sixteen, eighteen year old team also uses it heavily in the summer. So it's a heavy Stanton presence, but it's their home field, it's our city stadium. And it needs work, it's seventy plus years old. The field's in good shape except for some workout in the outfield with some grading, but as you can look at the pitchers, it's, it's not ADA accessible. The bleachers, we, we fabricated that, they're used not, they used to be just set on the concrete. The dugouts, seventy years ago, were fine for a team of nine. These college teams and high school teams have twenty and twenty five. They're lined up on the outside, they put their. They're lined up on the outside. They put their equipment in the dugout. By the pitcher, you can also see that there's gravel and that that was a sunken dugout. We filled them up because they stayed full of water all the time and it was embarrassing. We kept pumping them out, pumping them out. At some point, it needs to be addressed. It's, it's aged beyond repair bathrooms. You know, there's a bathroom facility there. They're inoperable and the doors lock. So.
I, I think it desperately needs a redo. The question is, is it going to require two hundred thousand dollars for design phase only? I mean.
I would hope it would come in under that, but in some of the research with some other locality, some of the facilities have, depending on how big, how elaborate you want to go, I, I hope it would come under that. I, I don't know if that's, you agree with that or.
Chad in procurement was looking at some of the, um, the contract for ODU for their new stadium. And that design phase was one point eight million, which of course is a much larger stadium than what we're doing. So we're, if we come in at like ten percent of that, it's still, it would come right under the two hundred. But I don't think a hundred thousand would be enough to cover the design phase. It could. I don't think so. So I would hesitate to drop it to a hundred thousand, but we could. And we'll see whether the bids come in at for that.
I would definitely like to get it started. The only reason I'd like to see ARPA funds be used for this would be so that it would be spent in the rest of twenty twenty-three. Because we know we have a major issue there. And if we put the survey off into the CIP, then we're talking next year before we're really ever going to get it started. So I, I would love to jump on this because I, I've walked it. I've looked at it. It's an embarrassment. We, we've got to do something and I know we're not ready to build, but we need to design so that we know what our plan is. And I think we need to contact some of these other organizations that are using the field more than we are. Between the, the Braves and the, the Mary Baldwin, they're using it over fifty percent of the time. And I think we're gonna need some assistance, but.
Well, you look at the Braves, they're there every day, practice, uh, twenty to twenty-five games. Mary Baldwin, spring, fall, uh, twenty to twenty-five games each season, practice, uh, the high school, uh, every day. You know, in a, in an ideal world, we, we need another field. So it's used to its max. But I stress to all the users, other than the high school, it's their home field.
Right.
They have priority precedence. They take, you know, it, the practice times, when it's convenient for them, everybody else has to work around it. So it gets a lot of use.
It does.
It gets, it's used, used almost year-round.
I support, I support it and, and I would love to see the two hundred thousand dollars come in less than that, obviously. But I do think that if the, that if the plan is to, to approach these other groups, that maybe, you know, we can make up some of that, you know, after the fact.
We'll approach these other groups, but I want to make crystal clear that it's, it's your baby. It's, it's your field. We want, we want it to be Stan's.
Right.
Yes.
Now, uh, Mr. Tuttle, you, you said Mary Baldwin and the Braves tend to use it, are kind of the heavier users of it right now?
They are, along with the high school.
Okay, now, now do any of the other users, uh, pay us anything for, for upkeep or renovations along the way? Has anybody done anything with that?
They do not. Uh, there's no fee to the Braves. There's no fee to Mary Baldwin.
Okay.
Uh, we also, we also provide services to both groups as far as mowing. Any special requests, but I will say both groups, when they're using the facility, maintain the playing surface. We don't do that. We don't go out and mark the field before a game for them. They take care of that. Other than the routine maintenance, we, you know, the mowings on their schedules, when they want to mow, we do that. We have to mow it anyway. So.
Okay. Yeah, I, I completely agree that it needs, uh, you know, it needs replacement and, and work and, and all that. I just, uh, you know, as long as we own something, we might as well make it actually usable. But I, I definitely go along with the thing other people brought up about, you know, I definitely would like the other users to be involved in, in helping us out with that.
I think there's something out there, just out of curiosity. Is there any precedent for a public-private partnership for baseball teams, for local baseball teams or local baseball?
Not that I'm aware of.
You wouldn't want to see Verizon Stadium, Stanton Verizon Stadium.
Options are out there, I'm sure. If you reached out to someone, I'm sure.
And you'd be open to that?
I would.
Amen. Edwards.
Yeah, I could bankroll that. No worries. Put my retirement towards that.
So my goal is to get a nice stadium that we're all proud of, uh, whose ever's, you know, names on it. I'm fine. The end result is we get a new stadium.
Amen.
That's a yes.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle.
Is the yes original request for two hundred?
Yeah.
Of course, if it comes back less than that, we'll come back to reappropriate the difference. So the next request is to use three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to replace the roof at the Stanton Public Library. The current roof leaks during heavy rains. Sometimes used to collect dripping rainwater. Repairs have been made several times. The current roof, uh, we believe is in need of replacement.
Come on, Sarah, you don't escape.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm all right.
Well, thank you for being here. Sorry to keep you out all night. We know books and water don't go along very well.
Say down, we're lucky that the leak is in the meeting room at the moment, which does not house any portions of our collection. We do notice staining occurring above some staff workstations. So when we anticipate heavy rain, she is tarping her entire computer station and has moved all of her personal effects away from her desk. It has not leaked at that part yet, but water takes the path of least resistance and who knows where that next path is going to take it. So yeah, so we're lucky it's in the meeting room, but I have personally carted gallons of water out of that room over the past couple of years. And if I remember correctly, I first put my ticket in for an inspection or roof repair or ceiling repair in August of twenty twenty. And they have done work on it for the past two years, but obviously there is a bigger issue happening with the building. We moved in in nineteen ninety-five, twenty-eight years ago this week. I was thirteen years old. I'm not thirteen anymore. So just, so I think that just kind of puts it into perspective.
You look our teens, Sarah.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, but.
How long is the current roof in there?
It's probably been there since they moved in in nineteen ninety-five, when that work was done to renovate that building. So they have a finite lifespan. I'll let Jeff speak to the specifics about that, though.
It's now that Sarah's established that water should stay outside the library. Uh, this is, uh, we have been working on this roof constantly, certainly for the two years I've been here. Uh, and, and a whole new roof is required. Additionally, uh, the roof drain system will also need to be addressed because I think that interior roof drains were very, were quite in fashion earlier, early in the twentieth century. But once you let water inside your building, only bad things happen. So we'll have to take a look at that as well. So, and in the meantime, we'll continue to, uh, patch it as best we can. But this has to happen and it's, it's, uh, it, it's not a building that is particularly resilient. Uh, it's again, being used for a purpose that it wasn't necessarily designed for.
Right.
Uh, and that applies to the roof as well. So, uh, we need to get, uh, a new roof on it. And certainly from a timing standpoint, this is money that we would want, we would need to spend quickly. So the, certainly the ARPA deadline is the least of our concerns on this.
Any questions on that or is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Brad?
I'm, I'm good with that. Jeff, just out of curiosity, is this a membrane roof on top of that thing or what is it?
Yep, it is. In fact, we'll be getting, uh, having an asbestos survey done in the next couple of weeks to get a better handle on exactly what type of a membrane we're dealing with.
Okay, thank you.
You're good. Sarah, you need a roof. Thank you for everything you did.
The next request is four hundred thousand to enhance our security and safety at our public facilities. These security enhancements would include additional cameras, badges for all employees, electronic door locks and various other needs related to the safety of our employees and our citizens. I can take questions now?
A lot of that cameras?
Much of that is cameras. Yes, yes, it is. That's correct.
Or parking garages in this building.
Kurt Plowman, our IT Director is here. He can speak to that.
It would be nice to see just a, a general, uh, list of it. I've never seen a specific list for this one.
We're, we're still kind of working up that specific list, but it would include a lot of door locks. We are city facilities. We are open to the public, but right now most of our buildings are way too open to the public. And we've got places where people are wandering where they probably shouldn't be. In addition, we don't have cameras in a lot of our buildings and the cameras we do have are outdated or just not being recorded. So we're looking at replacing or adding door locks to many buildings, cameras to many buildings, including some of the parking garages. Just have a lot of facilities, even the parks. We don't really have a, any cameras at those facilities right now. And, and we have everything from damage and trespasses to other events that are happening there. We would look at being able to have things like the police dispatch have access to the cameras in case we have incidents. They've got access to the cameras in the schools. We just don't have any cameras in a lot of the city facilities.
Questions on that?
No, no, no question. I just, I, I really would like to see the, the overall list of what the improvements will be. If, if you are putting together that, I would, I would love to see it eventually.
I've got that. I'll be glad, sure.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
That a yes?
Okay.
Is that a yes? Yes.
Okay, next is a suggestion to use seven hundred and seventy-six thousand to cover Stanton's share of the design and the construction phase for the relocation of the Regional Animal Shelter to the old Verona Elementary School in Augusta County. Leslie, would you like to speak to this one?
Sure. So you were briefed about this early, uh, late, well, not that long ago, about a month ago. Waynesboro and Augusta County are the partners in this. They've also approved, um, the funds for this. So the design has, you all gave your blessing as well. And so the design is actually starting this month and it'll wrap up in June. We, I mean, we anticipate we'll actually be in the new facility by, uh, late twenty twenty-four, actually, next calendar year. So it's a really exciting project. Um, so, uh, that's, so a lot of folks are excited about this. The rescue groups and the shelter employees are very excited.
Is Waynesboro approved?
Yes, they have.
Augusta County, of course, has provided.
Yeah.
And Waynesboro, they're, they've approved for design and construction.
Yes, ma'am. Yes. Baldwin approved our share of design, which is the one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. So our share is about thirty-five thousand dollars of that. Then the construction for us is about seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. Hopefully it will stay about that amount. We're having actually the final design done in the next few months. So if anything changes, we will definitely be coming back to council.
I think we're going to have enhanced Stanton use once it goes to Verona because it's much easier to get to Verona than it is to.
Anders, yeah.
Exactly. So, and what are we paying?
Great curbside location. It's got great curb appeals.
And then they have a place to walk the dogs. They have a track down there behind it. It's, it's gonna be a plus. And, and we're paying what approximately twenty-eight percent?
Twenty-six percent is our percent. It's a little under twenty-six. Actually, I used the twenty-six point one one percent. But actually I found out the other day our percentage is about twenty-five point seven two. So it fluctuates between twenty-four and twenty-six currently.
And that's depending on how many animals were transported from our city.
That is correct.
Yes. Is that a, is that a yes all the way?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Definitely.
Brad, is that a yes?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
I'm just gonna end up with a lot more cats.
Yes.
Yeah, it's more convenient for you to go shopping.
Yeah. It's the only shopping I like.
Keep going, Jesse. You're doing great.
Next two items are in the environmental fund. The first one is one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to relocate Stanton's Central Recycling Collection Center. This will be removing the facilities out of the parks into a more permanent location, which I believe is still to be determined. And then eight hundred and fifty thousand for standardized refuse collection. This will cover the cost of purchasing the standardized bins and retrofitting the trucks with the mechanical to first. And I'll, Jeff can speak more to these two projects.
Well, I'll start with that recycling center. Uh, so one hundred and fifteen thousand was a number that we, that I, I put out when we were still looking for a site. As I mentioned, uh, I believe at the last meeting, we settled on a site up at Public Works. Um, and we're fleshing that out now. I don't think it's going to be, we're going to need one hundred and fifteen thousand for that one because we own real estate. Uh, the other costs for fencing, grading and, uh, will still apply. We may have to do a little bit of traffic work, uh, up on, uh, our compound. Just because we figure we'll be generating between sixty and eighty, uh, trips a day. And we want to make sure that that traffic is appropriately accommodated. So there might be a little bit of road work in there as well, but one hundred and fifteen is certainly more than enough to make that happen. And the plan, timing-wise, is to, when we get kicked out of the park for Fourth of July, uh, never come back. And we'll just take that opportunity to make the switch. So, uh, the timing would work as well. And then, uh, the standardized refuse collection, again, I know I, I spoke, uh, as, as you said, I talked trash for quite a bit at the last meeting.
It never gets old, Joe.
Thanks. That number is actually developed based on the experience of Harrisonburg, who made the same switch about two years ago. So fairly, fairly confident, uh, in that one. I mean, it's, a lot has changed in the last two years, but, uh, surprisingly Harrisonburg, uh, has a very similar size refuse program. About ten thousand customers each. So despite the difference in population. They have a lot of multi-unit, uh, up at, up in Harrisonburg who use dumpsters. I will say that with the standardized refuse collection, remember the, the environmental fund is a enterprise fund. It's fenced money. And it would be exceedingly difficult to float a large one-time cost like this to make this change without something like ARPA money make it happen. Otherwise it would have to be financed with fee increases and, and sinking funds. So this really is a, uh, the timing is good on this. It's a, it's a one-time bold leap forward with, uh, one-time, uh, bold leap forward money.
One hurts me a little much, a little bit. I'll just be honest and say, I mean, I think it's a good idea and I know that, you know, but, but I, I guess I'd like to know more about what, if, if we're doing it because we want our workers' comp claims to come down, then what kind of, what are we talking about there? Are we, you know, number-wise, is it really gonna equate to bringing those numbers down?
It's not, sorry.
So, and so I'm just.
So what the workman's, workman's comp claims is. Is a, a part of it. It's certainly not the, the most significant part of it. The most significant part of it is to, uh, create an incentive to, for, uh, to reduce the amount of solid waste that the city generates because that obviously extends the life of the landfill. Uh, but more, more directly reduces the amount of the landfill costs that we have to share. So our, just, just like with, uh, animal shelter, it's our tonnage that determines what percentage that we generate. And since we have essentially an open-ended, uh, uh, solid waste program, there's really no incentive or no, uh, no attempt to even control how much we're bringing out there. Also, it creates, it, it creates a, a discreet workload that is easier to manage, easier to staff to, because we have an understanding of how many cans are out there, how many cans we have to touch each week and how that works. It also, uh, when it's standards like that would allow us potentially in the future, uh, to access other avenues, contract out portions of it because they can be discreetly described and contracted out. So it does help from a management standpoint as well. And then, uh, it also looks a whole lot better, uh, as you drive around town without seeing. And then it also looks a whole lot better as you drive around town without seeing, you know, you know, different random bags and different types of cans and different types of containers around. And I guess the last and maybe the most, the least important, it stops us from having to touch people's property, picking up their cans, their containers. I mean, obviously in the, in the refuse collection business, someone's got to touch someone else's stuff. I would much rather that the citizens were touching our containers than we were touching their containers.
Jeff, from a, from an end user standpoint of this change. So you guys, so we issue all the, you know, the city of Stanton trash cans. And let's say rabid Harry Potter fans steal my, my trash can and take it back with them to wherever. Now, how would I be paying a fee to get a replacement can or would there be a scheduled replacement already? Or they'd say, oh, you were, you know, you could have gotten one two years ago. So here's a free one. Have you worked that stuff out yet or is that yet to be decided?
That will be part of, that would be part of the policy. We certainly, again, because we are coming so late to this, there are any number of policies that we can look at. But one of the salient features that is common to all of them is replacement due to normal wear and tear. And I'm assuming Harry Potter miscreants running off with your trash can, we could file his normal wear and tear. That is part of the program will be replaced, the city. You know, if it's, if it's due to negligence, if you, you know, toss your hot charcoal, hot coals into the can and melt the bottom, then that might be different. But no, for the cyclic replacement, normal wear and tear, repair, in some cases, if it can be repaired, will all be done by the city.
These cans, they're, they're, they're heavy, right? They have like a metal bar in the bottom of them.
Yes, they'll have a metal, a metal bar that attaches them to the tipper, ninety-six gallon. So they're, they're large. Heavy duty cans, very stable, stable on the, on the side of the road and also certainly stable on the tipper as well.
Will every family get one, two?
Every customer will get, will, will, will be issued one. And then we'll have some provision for additional, if need be, at an additional cost.
Did you say it was different sizes?
We have different, different sizes.
So someone can choose what size.
Someone can choose. And, and again, we would incentivize, we would provide some, again, our, our cost of emptying is small and the largest is pretty much the same. And we still have to drive and wheel it out and dump it. But the idea would be to incentivize people who can to limit their solid waste to a smaller amount. So there'd be multiple, multiple sizes. There'd be options for folks who need more than one can. Again, as I said, these are all, these are all policy issues that, that we will lay out as we develop, as we develop the program.
If we have each family, each user gets a can. But I'm, what I'm getting at is, is there the policy there that, that a, if it's a ninety-six gallon trash can, a ninety-six gallon plastic liner goes in it or nope, you just dump it in there and?
It's a refuse, it's a refuse container and it's there to contain refuse. Folks, if, you bag, unbagged.
Either way, you can do it either way.
Either way. The same, the same, again, the same prohibitions on, you know, what can and cannot be in there will apply. But this is just, this is, I'm really just looking to standardize the containers. I'm not looking to standardize how people deal with their trash.
It gets stinky if they don't put something in there, but that's, that's their problem.
It's, yeah. I'm not sure I could say that at this podium, but yes, sir.
Any further questions? Is this a yes? Brad? It's a yes.
To both?
Yeah, I'm all for both of them.
Thank you.
I'm good with the one fifteen. I can live with the other.
That wasn't a waste of time. Please continue.
So the next recommendation pertains to the Stormwater Fund. We suggest to use one point two million dollars to fund the Gypsy Hill Park Stream Restoration Project. It would take the entire Stormwater Fund balance to complete the two major stormwater projects that are now in the works, which is the Co Avenue and the Gypsy Hill Park Projects. Using ARPA funds for one of these will help protect that fund balance for another future project. The city has applied for grant funds for this project. If we are approved for grant funding, then I would come back to you to reappropriate the funds, the part that is covered by the grant.
Is that a definite number? Do we, do we know it? It costs one point two million dollars? I've, I've never restored a stream.
Jeff Lyle, would either one of you like to speak to this?
Helps the numbers work out, Brad.
That's certainly an estimate. That would be refined as the, as it goes through the process, but you know, it's a thousand dollars a linear foot. It's not, not unreasonable for a daylighting project.
Is that, is that a number that we came to from just comparison with similar projects in different, different areas or? No, never mind. I don't.
Mr. Hart's here. Mr. Hart's.
Ah, hello, Mr. Hart.
Hey, hey, Brad. Everyone, it was the Gypsy Hill Park Stream Restoration Project. I'm not as familiar with that. That was done. It's currently, we did just receive the ninety percent or return our comments for the ninety percent design. So I think a lot of that, that one point two million you're seeing is coming from, from our, our design firm has been, been working on that and working with us on that. So I know our environmental programs has been primarily overseeing, seeing this project. And so it is, it's almost to, to full design. And so they've been, been contributing to our cost estimates for that.
And because the project is, is at that point, we will have certainly an actual number with still plenty of time to redirect any excess funds to other, to other requirements in time to beat the ARPA deadline. So if it's, if it's less, if it is, comes in at less than one point two.
Or we receive the grant funds.
Right. Or we get other grant funds. There'll be plenty of time to get that money spent somewhere else and still meet the ARPA deadline.
Yes.
Yes.
And the last item is the biggest item. The last suggestion is that we use the remaining funds of two mil, two million three hundred twenty-seven thousand, three twenty-six minus the fifty thousand that we would allocate to the West End Small Area Plan, if that is your, your wish. This would allow us funding to go towards separating out our juvenile domestic relation courts from the Augusta County Court Facilities. As you know, they had their vote in November to move their courts to Verona. And since we share that facility with them, we will need to separate that out from Augusta County.
And we know this isn't going to cover it all. This is just the beginning.
Yes.
It's sort of the catch-all.
Yes. So are you okay with, so in the injunction, she's asking about the fifty thousand dollars for this West End. So you're good with that? Okay. Yeah, this is.
I mean, we can find fifty thousand someplace.
Sure. Well, right there.
Exactly. Exactly.
Can we back up for a minute, please?
Please.
Okay. Let me go over some easy ones, I think. I don't know why my mic's ringing. The Montgomery Hall Park Road and parking lots. Was that?
Yes.
Yes. The dump trucks.
Yes.
Yes.
Fire apparatus.
Well, it's. Yeah. I mean, in order to get us back on schedule and put us in a positive, I mean, that seems like a good thing to do.
Scott always walks away with the big bucks.
I think Chief Garper made a, a good presentation and really laid out an argument for why we need to do it now. I was a bit skeptical, but thank you for, thank you for being there and explaining it.
Yes.
It's, I mean, it's public safety.
That covers everything.
It does.
Are there any additional items from council members that?
I want to thank you all for all the hard work you did on this and the analysis. And thanks staff for being out here to pass nine o'clock at night. We really appreciate y'all. But it's, it's hard to spend this kind of money without, you know, wasting some down. We don't need a motion on this one, do we?
No, we will. This is just discussion and we'll bring a budget amendment back to you in two weeks first.
Thanks, everybody, for your time.
Thank you so much.
All right, number E, consider, letter E, consideration of ordinance to revise guidelines for retail, no, for real estate tax relief for the elderly and permanently disabled. Ms. Bogart.
Oh, Ms. Reagan's been waiting patiently to talk about this. Here she is.
Thank you, Ms. Reagan.
You're welcome, Mayor Claffey, members of council. I'm going to jump out of my lane for two seconds. And I'm saying probably something that Leslie may not want me to say, but listening to your previous discussion about spending money on valuable assets of the city, I consider one of the most valuable assets we have, our employees. And I personally am not one of the, the people who gets consulted on capital projects. So I'm going to put my two cents worth in that it would be wonderful for us to have some sort of, I, I don't even know what you call it, but our staff, a lot of our staff walk across the street to get to the Wharf parking lot, to and from work every morning. No one pays attention to that crosswalk. And, and it would be great if we could have some sort of marking or flashing lights or something.
She's gonna take care of you.
Okay. And we, actually, the city received a grant, a versa grant to make improvements to that intersection.
Yay. Okay, I'll be quiet. I'm here to talk about.
Chad about when that will happen, but we have the funds to improve.
I, I very much appreciate that. Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you. I appreciate.
Game of Frogger.
Right. So just to give you a little bit of history on this item, the Code of Virginia authorizes commissioners of revenue in localities across the Commonwealth to administer a tax relief program that assists in deferring or relieving real estate taxes for the elderly or permanently and totally disabled. This is a program that, that I administer through my office. And what I am here this evening to ask you to consider is increasing the limits for that program. So the program is governed by both the total household income of the applicant as well as the assets of the applicant excluding the home. And as you may or may not know, there was a cost of living adjustment to social security this month of eight percent. And that is the main source of income that ninety-eight percent of the people in this program have. And so we wanted, I'm asking you to raise the limits because we felt like in order for the people who are in the program to maintain the level of relief that they have enjoyed up to this point, we need to increase those, those numbers. So I'm asking you to increase the income, household income limit to thirty-five thousand and the asset to seventy thousand from the previous limits of thirty and sixty-two five. That would basically put everybody on, on a level playing field. It's going to cost a little bit more money. How much I don't know because we'll probably induce some newer applicants to the program with the higher limits as well. I would imagine it probably costs us somewhere around fifteen or twenty thousand dollars, depending on also where the tax rate lands and the assessments and all of those things. But just as an increase to the program, probably somewhere around fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Council, any questions?
Maggie, I'm just wondering, how many people take advantage of this program each year?
We have about a hundred and seventy-five households in the program. They don't all receive a hundred percent. It's a sliding scale. So it's, it's anywhere from five to a hundred percent based on that, that combination of income and assets. And at the moment, we have about a hundred and seventy-five participants in the program that are receiving about a hundred thousand dollars of, of tax relief.
Thank you.
Maggie, how long has this, this program been going on? And have you seen a, you know, a great increase or has it just been gradually over time increased?
It predates me, so I, I don't, I'm, I'm sure it's been going on for a number of years. And, and the number of participants in the program has declined slightly in the seventeen years I've been here. And there are a number of different reasons for that, but, but the, the amount of, of relief that, the, the actual dollars in the program has not varied much over the past seventeen years.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor. I, after reading that, this, this week, I actually got excited. And I, you know, because I think especially in the times we're in and, and the possibility of some tough times ahead even. I got excited and I'm, was hoping I would actually get to propose this. And I, I moved to adopt the proposed amendments to Stanton City Code, Chapter three point one five as presented.
Motion has been made. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Arrowhead. Any further discussion? Mr. Kessler.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowhead.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Item F, consideration of resolution to establish Virginia America Two Fifty Commission Local Committee. Ms. Bogart.
Ms. Cheryl Wagner, our tourism director's also been waiting patiently.
Patiently. We didn't see you all. Thank you, Cheryl. Good to see you.
I promise to be brief. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm here today to ask for your consideration of a resolution so that we can establish a local committee for the Virginia Two Fifty. And the Virginia, the commission was established by the Journal Assembly. And they have asked each locality, a hundred thirty-three, to form a local committee. I have been designated the person to be in charge of it here in Stanton. And now we just need this resolution so that we can form the committee and that way we'll, we'll be able to apply for grants. We could get teacher resources and traveling exhibits.
We can think of no one better in this city to run this commission. Thank you, Cheryl, for doing this.
Yes.
We have a motion.
Yes, Mayor, I've moved that City Council supports the resolution to create a Stanton, Virginia VA Two Fifty Committee so that grant funding for commemorative events and other programs will be made available to the city.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Counselor Wood. Any further discussion? Mr. Kessler.
Mr. Arrowhead.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Item G, consideration of a resolution supporting a state budget amendment to provide two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Arcadia Project. Ms. Bogart.
Mr. Blair.
Good evening, Mayor Claffey, members of council, Mr. Arrowhead. Before you tonight, I guess the next time that Delegate Avoli comes in, instead of the million dollar man, you can call him the quarter million dollar man. He is, try, he is sponsoring a budget amendment for approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go towards the Arcadia Project's revitalization efforts at one nineteen and one twenty-three Beverly Street. It's the hope that this certainly helps in their efforts to build the Cultural Community Center and that it will create some jobs for the area. And before you tonight, as a resolution that if adopted will be sent to Delegate Avoli, Senator Hanger and Governor Youngkin asking that they enact this appropriation of two hundred fifty thousand dollars to the. of 250,000 dollars to the Arcadia Project.
I'd like to recognize the Wagners are here, who are the champions of that project. They're sitting in the audience.
Thanks for what you're doing. Great work. I'm going to do it, you guys. Yeah. I move to, oh, Mr. Mayor.
Go right ahead.
I move to adopt the resolution in support of a state budget amendment to provide 250,000 dollars to the Arcadia Project.
A motion has been made. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Vice Mayor Darby, second. Any discussion? Mr. Kessler.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowhead.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, that brings us to Matters from the City Manager.
Item H.
Item H.
Mayor Claffey.
Vice Mayor Darby.
I move that the council reconsider its January 12, 2023 vote to approve the December 8, 2022 work session and regular meeting minutes.
A motion has been made. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
And I will qualify that only the three members of council that were members on December 8th are allowed to vote on this. Right? Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Kessler.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mayor Claffey.
Yes.
I move to delete lines 532 through 534 of the December 8, 2022 regular meeting minutes and substitute the following language. Applicant Scott Goldenberg addressed council by first asking Ms. Mead to recuse herself due to a social media post she made on the topic. Ms. Mead refused, stating that she has no financial interest whatsoever in the transaction and would benefit in no way from the result. Mr. Blair noted that the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act only requires a recusal of any counselor if they have a financial or personal interest, meaning that they own a property or business affected by the transaction. Ms. Mead does not have that, so she is within her legal rights to comment and participate in the matter.
Thank you. Is that in the form of a motion?
It is.
I'll second.
Again, the three of us only are allowed to vote.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
All right, that brings us to Matters from the City Manager, Ms. Bogart.
Thank you. I just have two items. One is the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission is starting to plan their community listening sessions. Those will happen between the months of April and July. So please be looking for more information on those in the next few months. The second item is I wanted to follow up on our discussion during the work session about filling the council vacancy. I just would like some flexibility as if, once I receive the, the five you would like to interview, if somebody can't come, for instance, do, may I have the flexibility to continue down the list? Since you're going to be ranking all the applicants. So I just want to make sure I have the flexibility to be able to do that. I think I said that right. Does that make sense?
I'm sorry. Did you say if they're not able to come?
Like, for instance, if we have your top five.
Right.
And somebody's not able to come or somebody says they're no longer interested.
Oh, if they're no longer interested. Absolutely.
Yeah. We'll try to make every accommodation. Obviously, we're going to offer Zoom if somebody can't come in person. So we'll make every accommodation, but if something else prevents somebody from coming, may I have the flexibility to continue down the list as the rankings fall? Are you okay with that?
We definitely grant.
Just go to, just go to the next.
I would inform you all, of course.
That's fine.
If that were the case.
It's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
To you, Brad.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I just, like, if they, if they say they're no longer interested, definitely. But I mean, if they just could not do it on that night, I would.
Yeah, we'll, we're going to be as accommodating as possible. And it will definitely be, be communicating with city councils as we move through early next week. So, yeah, I just have the flexibility in case.
Feel free to use your flexibility.
Thank you very much.
All right, that brings us to Matters from the Public. This part of City Council's agenda is entitled Matters from the Public. It is a time the council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. A copy of the Stanton City Council Matters from the Public rules are available in paper form at the clerk's desk and online on the City of Stanton's webpage. You are asked to familiarize yourself with these rules for commenting. Please come to the podium to begin your call, identify yourself, and complete your remarks within five minutes. Thank you. Do we have our?
Pamela Mason Wagner. I'm a resident of Stanton on North Colter Street. I want to just first say a thank you for the crosswalk between the Wharf parking lot and the park and the parking garage. I think the farmer's market participants will be enormously grateful. I always feel like I'm taking my life in my hands when I come back to East Beverly from the farmer's market. So that's great news. Secondly, as the executive director of the Arcadia Project, I just want to thank you for agreeing to accept the funds that John Avoli is trying to get for us. A group of six of us were lobbying last Wednesday in Richmond. We met with all 22 members of the Appropriation Committee. And they were all, I would say, it's fair to say, all reasonably fairly disposed to this project. We are facing a possibility of using ARPA funds to complete this project. And as you have, understand, they are time limited. So it's really a once in a generation opportunity to get that building back online. And we appreciate your support. Thank you. And we, we look forward to taking you all on a tour soon.
Great.
Thank you. Looking forward to that. Mr. Kessler, am I on line?
No, sir.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Brief and redundant, Joanne Tigert, 918 North Augusta. Our library is a wonderful resource for everyone in the area. And I thank you for being supportive of getting in a new roof. I was in a meeting in the meeting room the other night and the corner was filled with yuck. And it has other needs too, and will need support in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you read? Do you understand?
Hold on a sec.
Any callers?
No, sir.
All right. Go right ahead, Mr. Folsom.
I don't have my hearing aid.
Go ahead.
You're going to have to speak up.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I have been having a problem with the health department. And you, they, you, they are responsible to you because you are appropriating close to 300,000 dollars for their operation. They have been engaged in lying, deceiving, and stalking. They can't get any worse. I ask questions because I ask the question. I ask who, I was on a meeting with Mrs. Perry. Mrs. Perry no longer works here. I would like a meeting then with the person in charge. I said, you're going to dislocate your shoulder. No response. Then she finally says to me, this is the office manager, says to me, hey, she'll be in on Monday. You just got done telling me she no longer works here. Now she's going to be in on Monday? What goes on there? I don't understand. Then the next thing I find Mr. Weekly, and he's about as weak between the ears as is my pinky. And he says, can we work outside and talk? I said, certainly. Am I too loud for you? The next thing I notice is a police officer. He comes in and talks to her. What he said to her, I don't know. What she said to him, I don't know. But they gave me a no trespassing notice. I am no longer can enter the office, the state office building at Colter Street. Why? I wasn't abusive. I wasn't out of order. I ask questions. I get no response except lies, deceit, and stalking. How does a man show up from the health department there? How does the man show up at exactly about a minute or so later than I showed up? I can't understand how that happens on the same day that I arrived at trying to speak to Mr. Day. Mr. Day has sold his 200, his 375,000 house about a month ago, months ago, down to Naples. He was in that storm. He found a better place, I guess, than Waynesboro. I doubt that. But I ask him questions. The only thing I get from these people are dislocated shoulders. When can I expect honesty, integrity from these people in positions of authority? I spoke to the town, to city manager. She said, do you want me, do you want the city council to act as a intermediary between your problem with the health department and yourself? I said, absolutely not. I want to know how they arrived at giving me a no trespassing sign when there is never any sign there for asking questions. Why can I not get a positive constructive response from asking questions? It doesn't make sense to me. There are so many things that have gone wrong in this city and in this council that just boggles my mind. I had a meeting with the assessor at one time. And after an hour of talking and giving me a lot of BS, I get to the conclusion that location, location, as far as assessment is concerned, doesn't matter. Doesn't matter. I have asked half a dozen or more realtors about location, location, location. That is one of the primary items that people consider when they are purchasing or buying a house. And it's not considered when assessments are assigned. The person who is now the assessor, he was in Charlottesville for many years. Asked to leave, given a bonus to keep his mouth closed. Went to Albemarle County, lasted five years, asked to leave, given a bonus. Hired by Stanton at a salary which was higher, which was higher than what he ever received at Charlottesville or Stanton.
Thank you, Mr. Folsom.
When can I get answers?
Mr. Kessler, anyone on line?
I apologize. I hope I wasn't too loud.
Anyone else in the audience? Thank you, people. It's now 9:33. The regular meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.